All right, welcome to the workshop session of the Lewisville City Council. We do have a quorum. You see the green rings up there? That means that microphone can hear you in this room, so just be aware. Let's see here. First up, on tonight's agenda is discussion of the consent and regular agenda items. Y'all can find your agenda there. I've got Councilmember Jones for the invocation. I've got the pledges with Councilmember McGreen. We're proclaiming Ashley Chan Day tonight, so that's exciting. We have a presentation from the Salvation Army regarding the Red Kettle Challenge. Consent Agenda Item 1, First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement between Annexer and the City of Lewisville. And I know we were not intending for that to just stop. I remember when we did it. It was every year. Kept going, so. Item 2, bid award for Ace Lane Sidewalk and Waterline Improvements. Get that loop finally put in. Item 3, planning an interlocal agreement between Lewisville and Capel. Item 4, resolution approving an advanced funding agreement for highway safety improvement projects with the state of Texas.
How does this sort of work with this advanced funding thing? I don't think I've seen this before.
It's really just a reimbursement. Where is Dave's?
He's behind you. Sorry, usually over there. Can you explain?
Yeah, I mean, it's a standard text. This is the same kind of funding agreement we use with aesthetics and life 35. Basically, it's our standard advanced funding agreement that just outlines how they're going to reimburse us the money.
Okay, so they were, I guess, did they have to agree to the project we're doing, I guess?
Right. Now, I take back a little bit of what I said with this particular program, HSIP. The city pays for the design, and then the state actually comes in and they build the project. So, once we finish the design and turn it over to the state, the city's done. So, and that's what this agreement lays out, is that we're going to do the design and they're going to build it.
So, what happens if they don't like the design? Are they making comments?
They'll try them, and they have to improve it.
Item 5, alternative standard related to I-25 portal overlay for a fine Chevrolet. Is it a regular hearing?
I have a quick question about this. We'll have more discussion out of all chambers, but the, what is split concrete? I don't know what that is.
What, Richard answered the question?
It's the, it's an upgraded material. It is a concrete block, but it has the appearance of stone on the exterior. Examples are all over Lewisville. The Supertarget on Hebron.
That's concrete.
The Costco on San River Tollway.
It looks like pavement, basically. Parastone on the other side.
In a way.
I just found a picture on a map showing.
So, there's examples all over the city, or this is just more of an elevated decorative style structural concrete block. That has more of an architectural look to it, and is, like I said, is considered an upgrade.
A question that probably should have asked eight hours ago, because that changes my thought process a little bit, so. I'm good, thank you.
Any questions on item 5? Item 6, declaring a vacancy exists and appointment to place 7 on the park board. Patrick, I think you have a recommendation for that? Was it you and Ronnie?
Yep. I'm going to need the recommendation, even though I've forgotten it.
I think in my notes here, it looks like it's going to be, you're going to recommend Daniel Law?
Yeah, that's who it is. I see a part of Daniel Law.
Any questions on that? Mr. Law is the gentleman from Castle Hills who's come and done some public comments. I think he was in Citizens U.
He hung on to you, yeah.
Okay. Reports, city council and staff reports. Do we have any closed session?
No.
We do, but during the workshop. Okay. All right, with nothing else to deal with, item A, we'll move on to item B, city charter review, the committee recommendations.
So, Mayor, we put this back on in whole just to make sure you guys have flexibility to talk about anything you want to talk about on this charter review, but we did receive direction from, last time, from council on kind of where they wanted to head, specifically stating that you guys wanted to move forward with the may election. The first topic I want to talk about is the process for doing that. So, we would need to call, have an ordinance to call that special election at a special call meeting to meet the deadline to call. So, that, we are recommending it be next Monday at 6:00 PM, if you guys are amenable to that.
I actually got conflict, but any other day we could do it?
We could. Yes.
It's doable if the fire station goes according to plan.
I hope so. It's a four.
It's a four.
Yeah, so I was thinking six. If we pushed it later, would it work? Because I think this will be a fairly quick meeting. Would that help you with your conflict? Now you're out.
I don't know. I'm going to make that come out soon.
Would have to be next week, right?
It has to be next week. The deadline is the 4th.
Friday the 4th.
The 14th, 5:00 PM.
There's only one conflict.
We can do it.
Let's push it to seven.
Seven? Okay. We can do seven.
Bob, you going to be all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, there were two other topics that were brought up, and I wanted to have a touch point, because for us to call it, I want to make sure we get exactly what you guys want. So, one, we're going to talk about gendered language, and we're going to go into executive session and discuss with your legal counsel. The other one was timing on council, if we are going to call the election for council increase in pay. There was a discussion about wanting to, I think Patrick rose the issue, was wanting to have it not, to avoid a look like you guys are providing raises to yourself, that you guys would wait until your next election came up. So, basically, it would not be effective in your current term. It would only be effective in your second term. Is that, am I accurately?
Correct.
And I think some of the comments were like, that might be a little bit too long. And then, I think I may have suggested, or someone else suggested, it might have been me, which was not a good idea, was you could just delay it for a year. And I think after reflecting on that, I'm not sure that achieves, if we're trying to do, if we're trying to avoid looking like we're giving ourselves raises, that doesn't achieve that. It just postpones it a year. And it does come with administrative, not a lot, we can do it, does come with some administrative headache of just managing who's doing what. And I don't know if you guys want us staff to take on that it is small, but it is more of a burden, if you're not really achieving the goal you were, that was stated. So, to me, I feel like it might be an all or nothing proposition to achieve or not to achieve the goal. I think postponing it a year doesn't really get you anything.
Postponing it three would get us what I'm trying to achieve, is that right?
I think the direction from, I'm sorry, the direction after that was everyone was like, well, why don't we just postpone it a year?
Right, right.
And so, yes, I mean, if you, if you're concerned of what Patrick had raised, I think his solution is the only, would solve that issue. Or if you're not concerned about it, then that's fine, we just, we just call it. But I wanted to make sure I touched base with you guys and express that, that thought process, because I don't think we're accomplishing much by just a one-year delay. But I will let you talk amongst yourselves what you want to do.
So, things that concern me in my life and for the city, this is a very small thing, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to make a big stink about it. Our preference is to delay it three years, so that is out of every cycle, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to. Bigger fish to fry.
And delaying it three years, I mean, there's some people that are not on that timeframe. So, like, if you have, I mean, you would have the person that runs the next time, next year, they, I thought you were just saying, not in this current term that you're serving.
Right.
He staggered what he said.
Yeah.
The concern that I got back, though, is that it's too hard to, too hard to administer. But that was in council, not wasn't from staff.
Right, we can do it. We can do it. It's just a hand, I mean, there are not many of you, we would just have to hand adjust it all.
Okay. Yeah.
So, you would, so if we can do that, you would prefer, just based on not giving it in your current term?
That'd be my preference, yeah.
Okay. I don't know what y'all's thoughts are.
So, I've seen a lot of cities do this. I've seen them do the staggered thing, and I've seen them do the, they pass or they don't pass. I don't think there's any rhyme or reason to it. As far as I'm concerned, citizens made the recommendation. Citizens are the ones doing the voting. The only thing we are is the gatekeeper of whether or not the citizens' request gets voted on. So, I don't, I don't see this as us giving ourselves a pay raise. I, I get where people do, but I just, in my mind, this is a completely citizen-run program. Citizens get to give the thumbs up or thumbs down, and if they give the thumbs up and you wait three years, does that, is that the will of the people? If they give the thumbs down and you don't, I, I just, that's, that's my take on it.
I thought we had the same kind of line of, line of reasoning with that. My only concern is that by approving it to go on, we're tacitly show a support for that particular item.
Sure.
So, but that's, again, of all the things we assert about the city, this is not at the top of my list.
And frankly, it opens up the opportunity for other people to, to run for office. And at least, I don't know about you guys, but it, it can be costly to do all the things that the community wants you to be able to do. So, I think that this helps with folks that maybe, you know, that'd be a stretch too far.
I just can't swallow it.
I know, I get it. I'm all choked up, too. It's okay. So, that's, that's my, my two cents, since I didn't get it last time. So, I think we just need some consensus for staff to figure out what language they're going to put on this.
I mean, my suggestion would be keep it as simple as possible. That's just the public school, I mean. It's like, don't make it so complicated for the staff and for the folks. The folks are going to make a decision, yeah or nay, either way. So, whether to delay it or don't, you know, as a person that doesn't have any, any skin in the game, I've been the cheapest council member you had, because at least two, two, no, six years, I worked for a school district, so I couldn't take the $50 per me either. So, it's not only raising, giving a little bit more money. Nobody's getting rich, we're not, our suburb to the south, we're not getting the type of money they're getting, but it's just a way to, to help out the future council members. So, I'm all for it, and I'm not, I'm not going to see any of it, so. And I'll go around and say, and preach it to anybody who wants to, wants to argue.
I agree with TJ, so.
Yeah. I'm not going to agree with that.
All right. I appreciate the discussion, though.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. We have some closed session. So, we'll need to go into closed session with our human resources director, Ted Phillips. And the language I have to read is somewhere in here. Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, is, all I have to do is the yellow. Okay? Then that's it, consultation with attorney. There we go. All right, welcome back. Anything else on item B, city charter review? All right. Item C, park dedication and naming recommendations. We have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Anne Parkin. Just go through those, that'd be great. Any questions?
Any questions? Turf fans, no. Mayor's City Council members, park fans, I want to run you by some recommendations we're going to be bringing before council next week in terms of a couple of dedications and namings for parks and trails. We'll review the protocol, talk about the considerations and our recommendations, and the park board action is taken. So, our guiding, naming facility guidelines, PR 107, and it was implemented in 2022, and it kind of creates guidelines for how we name parks or trails, whether we do it by adjacent streets or landmarks, or maybe a subdivision name, or recognizing an individual or an organization with, with community support. That second bullet requires some people to come in and petition us to do that. We take recommendations to the park, the park board, they review and recommend the names for the parks and trails, and then we bring that to the city council, and they can review the park board recommendations, or y'all are able to just outright name without going through us or the park board, if you so choose. Back in 2022, we dedicated and named 29 parks. A lot of those came over during, after the Castle Hills annexation. Right now, we're considering three areas. One is going to be where we are going to start construction of the Timber Creek Trail Extension east of Central Park, Old Town Pocket Park next to Sullivan's Barbecue, and then the Coit Alley area up in the northern gateway off of Summit.
Was the Centennial Trail the one where we had public gaming property? What was that one?
Yes. Well, we're working our way, well, we're almost there. So, the Timber Creek Trail Extension, like I said, moves east from Central Park over to Corporate Drive. It'll connect the Triangle Neighborhoods to Central Park and enhancing our 10-minute walk to a park goals. Claire gave us a great recommendation, wanting to commemorate Lewisville's 100th birthday, so we came up with the idea of naming it the Centennial Trail, so we can do a groundbreaking in the centennial year, plus what an amazing way to cap off our march towards 100% of 10-minute walk to a park for residents there. We'll groundbreak in spring or summer at that, at that location, and we'll probably do the groundbreaking in Central Park near some of our public art. For the Old Town Pocket Park, just keep it simple, Old Town Pocket Park, it's a small park, two small parcels next to Sullivan's Barbecue. One was dedicated to the city when the Mill Street Apartments went in, and we'll do a groundbreaking there in the summers, well. And then, the Heritage Prairie Park and Trail that we're recommending is where that Coit Alley Vision Plan was. It was dedicated to the city as part of the Nora and Heritage Trails Development in Turge Four. It's partially complete. We're working on doing some trail extensions there and improvements around the Eastern Pond, but there is functional park space and trail happening right now. We already maintain, or plan to maintain, these areas anyway. So, those are our, our recommendations. The park board has seen that and given the thumbs up at their January meeting, and we will formally be bringing a resolution to you next meeting, so February 17th, with these three recommendations. Unless y'all.
Any questions?
Or alarmed?
Wasn't the Old Town Pocket Park, wasn't that going to be maintenance by?
Yeah, so we have an agreement with Sullivan's for some improvements to the facade, and in doing that, they're going to help us activate the park and do some of the general maintenance there. And our team is still going to be there. That is going to supplement, not supplant, our, there.
So, the Bob Troy Memorial Trail just never made it on the list?
It's a memorial.
Celebration trip.
Just making sure you're awake, Bob.
All right.
We're good, we're good.
Okay.
No questions on those?
No questions.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, gang. Let's see here. I think that's it for workshop. We're going to go ahead and break from workshop and move into regular session at 7:00 PM. We're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. It is 7:00 PM, and we do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda, we have the invocation given by Councilmember Brandon Jones.
Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation.
Councilmember McGreen?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
It is always a great pleasure. If I got to stand here, you got to stand here. It's always a great pleasure to recognize Lewisville citizens for doing great stuff and always representing the community in such a great way. I'd like to welcome Ms. Ashley Chan. For those of you who maybe don't know Ashley, she was a four-day winner on Jeopardy this year, so. And as I was telling her earlier, I have lots of fond memories growing up with my grandmother watching Alex Trebek. So, it was really great to see Lewisville. I mean, my phone started lighting up, hey, there's somebody, so we knew we had to do something. So, tonight, many of you know that I do these proclamations, and I kind of do this call and response thing, like if we're in church, where I say the wheresses, and you all say it along with me, we're going to do it a little bit differently. I think you're going to figure it out, so here we go. First up, whereas, what is a long-running and iconic American television game show created by Merv Griffin in 1964 and airing continuously in its current form since 1984?
Jeopardy.
That's right. And whereas, what is a highly challenging quiz competition that rewards contestants who demonstrate a broad knowledge of common and obscure topics?
Jeopardy.
All right. And whereas, who is a Lewisville resident and Jeopardy contestant whose episodes aired in December of 2024?
Ashley.
And whereas, who won four straight days on Jeopardy by demonstrating not only a deep knowledge of various subjects, but also remarkable composure under intense pressure?
Ashley.
There we go. And whereas, who represented the Lewisville community with excellence and grace through her success on Jeopardy?
Ashley.
Yeah, y'all got it. Now, therefore I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim February 3rd, 2025, as Ashley Chan Day in Lewisville, Texas, and encourage all residents to celebrate her success. And Ashley, we've got family back here. Did you want to recognize anybody?
Yes. Oh, I brought pretty much my whole family. So, I brought my husband, my father-in-law, my parents, my grandparents, my aunt and uncle. My grandma was on Jeopardy in 1974, so.
Oh, that's awesome. It's a family thing.
Yes. So, hopefully continuing the tradition. But thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all for doing this.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being part of it.
Thank you.
All right, give her a hand. All right, next up, item D, we have a presentation from the Salvation Army to present the mayor's Red Kettle Challenge results. It's, it's creative sometimes. There it goes.
Mayor, I'll take, thank you for supporting our kettle program for 2000.
Very nice.
Well, I am Major Dwayne Durham, one of the Salvation Army officers from here in Lewisville. My wife is the other one, the other, better one, Major Marion. But I'm also accompanied by my colleague, Major, I tried to call him Major, David Fieser. He is our major gifts manager. But we want to say thank you, Mayor TJ Gilmore, and city leaders for participating in the 2024 Lewisville Area Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. Your leadership inspired three other area mayors in this area to participate in that challenge. Flower Mound Mayor Cheryl Moore, Bartonville Mayor Jacqueline Carrington, excuse me, and Highland Village Mayor Charlotte Wilcox. And we have a certificate for you and a bell that we are pleased to present to you and your team for helping the challenge raise much-needed funds for the Salvation Army of Lewisville and our year-round programs addressing family instability caused by poverty, homelessness, and addiction. So, we're happy to report that your efforts, very successful, combined, all efforts combined, the Lewisville team raised $1,576.
Yay!
So, just to report to you that breakdown, 785.61 was raised right there on Sam's Club, as you were ringing the bell there. A little bit of that was raised right here, the night we came with the kettle setup. And then, $790.39 was raised through your online, your virtual Red Kettle. So, a very successful campaign, as you placed second in the Salvation Army Lewisville's 2024 mayoral Red Kettle Challenge. Most importantly, we owe you a debt of gratitude, because your efforts inspired four mayoral teams to raise a total of $9,804 in donations. So, we very much appreciate leading the charge to help provide hope and help to neighbors in need. So, your efforts helped the Salvation Army in Lewisville support neighbors like Cory. She had been homeless and came to us for help. She lost her job, which is what led to her homelessness, and she did not have any friends or family here who could help. So, she came looking for help, and we shared with her the different resources that we were able, could provide, and we told her about a shower, just a simple shower, and lunch, and medication that we could help provide for her. She began to tear up. You know, we just don't know how something as simple as those basic needs can make a huge difference, meeting those needs. And she's been, she had been living in her car, and going here and there to use bathrooms to clean up, and she stopped taking her blood pressure medicine because she had no insurance or money to get it. So, we told her about free clinics. She was able to go there to get a checkup, and we helped her to get the medicine that she needed. She was committed to looking for a job every day, and she came regularly to take a shower, eat lunch, and even apply for jobs. She never missed a day. Even with the situation she was going through, she was always positive, always had a smile, always thanked us every time. She got two job interviews in the same day, and she was so excited, and we were able to give her a gas voucher to go to those interviews. We were able to, and so happy that she got offers from both places, and both one morning and one evening shift, so she took both jobs and is still working. And she saved up and applied for an apartment, and I believe she moved in, and, you know, it's just a great testament to, you know, setting goals, working hard, and proving that, you know, anything is possible. And we were able to help her with that. So, we do continue to see those kind of needs, and we see those demands, and we are humbled by your support, and your generosity ensures that we're able to provide six hot nutritious meals every week, groceries through our food pantry, critical financial assistance, and safe place for our neighbors to lay their heads, those that need the warming center overnight, which we open for, how many did I say? We open for 11 nights, I think it was, this time around, this, this year. But more importantly, your support will help us provide hope for our neighbors like Cory. And we look forward to your participation this year, 2025 Red Kettle Challenge, and we, if you haven't been, we welcome you to come and tour our facility and see all the work that you are supporting with your generosity. So, thank you so much, and we pray God's richest blessing upon you, and I'll ask you, Mayor, if you would come down so I can present your certificate and this nice bell that you can go around the office and ring.
Wherever there's a picture. Thank you, girl. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Cannot thank you enough for what you do for the community and what the Salvation Army does. Of course, we don't see you most of the time until the holidays come out, but they are here year-round, so if you feel so called, reach out, Salvation Army, just Google it, and see if there's an opportunity to help. I know there is. All right, thank you, Mayor. Take care.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, Item E, Visitors Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping a feat, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have Ms. Ainsley Stelling with a request to appear before the council. Ainsley, if you could speak your name and address for the record, which I'm sure you know.
I have a presentation for you if you want to follow along. Mr. Mayor, Council, esteemed city leadership. Let me start with a story of a small town in the hill country, timelessly altered by short-term rentals. We spoke of it in these very chambers this time last year. Today, the landscape of Fredericksburg is not what it was 15 years ago. In said time, without city regulation or intervention, one in four homes became in short-term rental. In fact, some neighborhoods were completely overrun in their central and historic districts. Permanent residents who used to live in those areas were, fled, or have been displaced. Short-term rentals have also inflated home prices 35% faster than the state average from 2011 to 2023 per Statista.com. Now imagine being a young teacher who just graduated from college, or maybe a young family who wants to raise their kids in the hill country. The average price of a home last year was almost $800,000 according to Realtor.com. There's no way younger generations can afford that kind of price for a home. That puts them doomed to be stuck in the rent races for years to come. Now let's paint a similar picture of a small neighborhood here in Lewisville at the end of Mill Street. Yes, I am biased because I live in that area. While we have two permitted short-term rentals at the moment, there is nothing in our current ordinance protecting our 20-house paradise from being overrun with short-term rentals in the future. Just as encountered in the historic neighborhoods of Fredericksburg, we have no HOA, we don't want one, we are at the center of the Lake Park Master Plan and inside the soon-to-be-marketed Lake District while 70% of our homes back up to the lake. Right now, the city is widening Mill Street with bike lanes to encourage people to come to our area. As residents, we welcome changes that enhance our community and our safety, but not at the expense of those of us who live there, since 60% of my neighbors were against even wanting short-term rentals in the neighborhood in the first place. Yet, we understand the position the city is in and are willing to work with you on making our STR ordinance a win-win for everybody. Thus, the request before you is to add a density clause to our existing short-term rental ordinance that no more than 12.5% of a block face be permitted short-term rentals. Its purpose goes along with the big move of diverse and thriving neighborhoods and similar language has held up over the years in both Ulysses and San Antonio. While I know this doesn't help my neighborhood now, it poises us for success in the future. But I know the question that everybody has is, will this stand up in court? And I want to say, yes, it does, as the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit recognized legitimate local concerns, preventing nuisances, promoting affordable housing, protecting neighborhood residential character. In fact, they recommended not once but twice at capping the number of licenses for any given neighborhood. You could also call that a density clause. I ask that this be added to the, added to the ordinance prior to the end of our moratorium in March, if that is possible, because I believe a councilman said last year, "You can't put the genie back in the bottle once it's released." Thank you.
Thank you, Ainsley. I have no further comments for the Visitors Forum. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. All the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be acted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no requests for pulling any items. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item Five, Regular Hearing. Consideration of alternative standard related to architectural standards of the IH35E Corridor Overlay District on a 1.13-acre tract being a portion of Huffine Chevrolet Warehouse Edition Block A, Lot 1, located on the south side of Bennett Avenue, or Bennett Lane, approximately 890 feet east of Interstate Highway 35E, Zoned Light Industrial District as requested by Trent Clark of A+ Design Group, the architect on behalf of Huffine's Lewisville Property LP, the property owner, case number 25-01-1-ALT STD. Huffine Chevrolet is a large automotive dealership located on the Interstate Highway 35E Frontage Road. The applicant is subdividing a portion of the dealership for a proposed 8,989 square-foot auto parts storage building. The site lies in the IH35E Corridor Overlay Core Subdistrict, which has enhanced requirements -- that's what I get for not turning off that timer -- enhanced requirements to the exterior building design standards. The applicant is requesting an alternative standard to the architectural requirements for three of the proposed elevations. The engineering site plan was first submitted in April 2024 and discussions began eight years prior. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six to one of the alternative standard on January 21st, 2025, and is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. We have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions. We also have Nathaniel Tavares, who is with APDG Architects, the architect on this project, and he is also available for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So, so this is, this is split concrete, right? And I just saw a picture of this. I probably should look for that picture before council meeting. Thank you, Mayor, for showing me that picture. This is common throughout Lewisville, is that right? This isn't a tilt wall?
Correct.
Okay. All right. The, I'm just curious, anytime I see variance, especially on IH35, Interstate 35, immediate my antenna go up. What's the reasoning behind the variance request? Is it just a cost savings thing? Is there some other reasoning behind that? I'm curious.
I would defer that to the architect.
Mr. Tavares, would you mind? Thank you, sir. And if you would please state your name and address for the record. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My name is Nathaniel Tavares, representing A+ Design Group. I live at 1204 College Parkway, Apartment 927, Lewisville. To address the question of why split-faced masonry, there is a cost savings involved when compared to clay masonry brick. We believe that this is a high-quality material. The block is not, it's not just a standard split face. It's integrally colored. It has block sealers to preserve its appearance and color with time. And we believe that it upholds the spirit of the ordinance.
Do we have a rendering, like we had for the movies Eight: Warehouse? We had a rendering of what that was going to look like. Do we have such a rendering for this?
We only have the rendering that's in your packet, which I believe was just a black and white drawing.
Right. Okay. Okay. That's, that's all the questions I have. Thank you so much. Thank you for your, your comments. Appreciate it.
Mr. Tavares, do you intend to have a single color, multiple colors? Is there, has that been any discussion on that? All we saw was the black and white rendering, so I'm not really sure what, what the facade was going to end, end look like. We, we've got similar buildings around the city, but I was curious.
Okay. So to note, the front facade does meet the city's ordinance for brick masonry. The block portions of the building are mostly obscured from view. We do have screen walls that, along the main road, to obscure the block mostly. What block is visible is intended to be, I believe it's a tan color.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. This is in the IH35 Overlay District, but it's not on IH35, just to make that clarification that it is on Bennett with the front facing Bennett and the sides, it looks like we've got buildings on either side of it. So it's kind of mid-block. It's kind of, how far up back from 35 is that, Richard? Do you know?
I believe the caption, 890 feet.
Okay.
East of the furniture.
So it is not visible from 35?
It's mingled in with quite a few other developments. It's a fairly small building, so I don't think it would.
It's not gonna catch your eye when you're driving down the highway.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Council, if there's no other conversation to be had, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item Six, consideration of declaring, consideration of declaring a vacancy exists and an appointment to Place Number Seven on the park board. There is a vacancy for Place Number Seven on the park board. Eight applications have been submitted, meeting qualifications for service in this position. It's recommended that the city council declare a vacancy exists and consider an appointment to the park board as set forth in the caption above. Council, do we have any recommendations?
Motion to declare a vacancy exists and appoint Daniel Law to the park board as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item H, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor. I've had some library activities for the week. AARP Tax Aid for Adults every Monday, February 3rd through April 14th, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Crawford Meeting Room Appointment is required. Teens at the Hive Make Your Own Valentines, Thursday, February 6th, 4:30 to 7:30. The Hive Maker Space, no registration is required. Movie screening Groundhog Day 1993 for adults, Thursday, February 6th, 6:00 to 7:45 p.m. Bennett Program Room, no registration is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Toria?
Yes, Mayor. I have a number of items for the, from the Grand Theater. First of all, Texas tunes, Bruce Robinson, presented by the City of Lewisville on February 8th. Hello, Dolly, presented by Christie New Theater of DFW, February 21st through the 23rd and February 28th through March 2nd. And there will be two shows on February 22nd and March 1st. And as always, Friday night acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, 6 to 9 in the Grand Theater. And there are two exhibitions going on right now. First of all, 2025 Four Artists Exhibition, NAMM, Bruno, Lee &amp; Lee, presented by the City of Lewisville, and that runs through March 4th. And then Building Bridges for Hope Toward Unity, presented by MLK of North Texas through February 22nd. These, these, this exhibit is, is presented by, are items that were, were created by students in the LISD. They are exceptional. They were presented to us on Martin Luther King Day, and I would encourage all of you to be just extremely excited about what our young people can do today. It's, it's, I'm always amazed every year when I see what, what these students create. And that's my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary, acting? Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Nothing? ED? Sweets? Moving along? We got a lake level. I know, I know I get a pause right here.
We'll start with the lake level. Once I get it pulled up here. So the lake level, we're at 92.8% full, 520.46 feet. And also wanted to give you a brief overview of the water main break and where, give you a status update on where we are on that. So little bit of, of information. The location was very close to 1702 State Highway 121 Business. There, it's behind the O'Reilly's there. Next to the creek, it was a water line that's parallel to the creek. The issue was caused by erosion by the creek, so had some erosions, ate away dirt from the pipe, separated the pipe, the pipe actually separated between the two joints, which released water. Very quickly, that resulted in a rapid loss in water in our water tanks, which the system lost pressure. Regulations require, once the pressure drops below 20 PSI, we have to issue a boil water notice, which is what we did. That was distributed throughout the public. It was a steel cylinder pipe in good condition. Like I said, it was erosion that, that caused the issue. We, the good news is, we issued, we rescinded the boil water notice at approximately 2:00 p.m. today. The reason that took till 2:00 p.m. is that we have to take, once we flush the system, we take water tests. It's a 24-hour process to test those water samples. So as soon as those water samples hit 24 hours, we ran those tests through our lab, our in-house lab, and they passed, so we relifted the boil water notice. Be happy to answer any questions.
I would just say, thank you to all the folks that had to get up early on late Saturday, early Sunday, and staff to, to go and get this work done. Thankful that we have our own water treatment facility, that we didn't have to wait on other people to, to get the testing done. So that was, that was a great, great option there. And then just, I get that sometimes we want a little more control in our life than we have. I would ask that residents continue to show grace and appreciation for the work that was done. I mean, to be able to turn this around as short a time as we did on a Sunday speaks incredibly highly to the staff and to the citizens, how much your staff works for you to make sure you have great quality of life, even when things have, have a speed bump. Y'all made it happen, so I appreciate that.
I, I do want to just thank all the departments that helped and participated. This was almost an entire city effort. I think almost, almost every department had some role in it, code enforcement, fire, police, public services. I'm gonna miss people, but it was, it was really city management, economic development, even utility billing. There was a lot of coordination to get the communication done and, and at the same time that we were assessing the issue and getting the repairs taken care of, so.
Thank you. Nothing? Chief? Chief? Councilmember Kelly?
Yep. So real quick here, Mayor. I wanted to acknowledge Captain Don Scarborough. He retired today after 33 years of service as a firefighter. That, that was appreciated, as long as I've been in the city. So I moved here in 99, so he's been a firefighter long before I was in the city. He went back and said he was a firefighter before they had class A uniforms. So he's been around for a while. That was a lovely ceremony. Anytime you get to see an officer or firefighter retire, the pomp and circumstance around that is really moving. So we appreciated that and thank you, Captain Scarborough, for your service to Lewisville.
Councilmember Green?
Okay. So TJ, you, you stole some of my thunder there, but I, I do also want to say thank you to the staff, not just public services, even though I know that was a heavy lift for public services, but for everybody, for how they handled the, the water line break this weekend. I know it was, I personally was in bed when that happened. I was sound asleep. I'm sure a lot of the people that ended up getting up out of bed and going, I'm sure they were sound asleep too. Thank you for getting out of bed and going and finding this water leak in the dark so quickly. Thank you so much for, for doing that. I just can't say it enough because I know that there's a lot of people that were kind of upset about how quickly the information got out. And I realize that we're in a, a society where we're, we're used to getting instant gratification. We want every, we want to know everything immediately, and this case really is, like we, we had to figure out what was happening. And that does take a little time, and that was not an easy find. So thank you for all of that. And then with that, I wanted to say, I've seen a lot of conversation about people asking, "Why doesn't the city have my information? I, I have a water bill. Why doesn't the city have my information?" The city does have your information for your water bill, but the state does not allow us to use that information for something like this. I have a water bill. Why doesn't the city have my information?" The city does have your information for your water bill, but the state does not allow us to use that information for something like this. They can, we can only notify you from your water bill if it's related to your water bill, for billing only. So, that is a state law that we have to abide by. And as far as, I've also seen, why is the alert system not an opt-out? Again, we are bound by state rules for that. So, with that, I wanted to say, if you did not get the alerts, you can go to the City of Lewisville's webpage. It's a little bit buried in there. If you just hit the little magnifying glass and type in "Citizen Alert Notification Sign Up", you will get to where you can just click on a link and sign up and make sure that you toggle, you know, I think that there were, if you don't want text messages, we're trying to be respectful and not call everybody at 2:30 in the morning. So, the text message was a great option. But if you don't allow text messages, then you didn't get the text message. So, just make sure that you sign up, you toggle everything appropriately for the best way to get ahold of you, because sometimes some of these things do happen in the middle of the night, and we don't want to wake you up. But we want to be able to get that notification to you. So, again, it's a Citizen Alert Notification Sign Up.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
So, yes, I would just be, just continue on this road. You know, we always think about our public safety, our police and fire as the heroes, but you don't think about Public Works until something doesn't work. And, you know, I've had a water main break on my street, and Public Works was out there all night getting it done. So, those guys worked their tails off to get this done. Nobody wants us to keep going. And I think the leadership of our staff, starting from the city managers to all of our directors, who kicked in and jumped in together, well, you know, the communication couldn't be perfect, because they were working, trying to figure out the problem and fix the problem and get that done first. So, kudos to you guys. I know it's hard. Most of the residents may not know to thank you. They may not have been to our water facilities to see all that stuff and how much it costs to maintain, you know. So, this is just one of those things, you know. We're sorry this happened to everybody. But if there's anybody you want to be in a foxhole with when stuff goes wrong, it's our staff, because they're going to get it done. Like Councilwoman Green said, you know, we're in instant gratification. And unfortunately, that was not something that we could fix fast. And we had to do testing. They got it done. They had to push the time back a little bit, but they got it done. We had all kind of online resources that were communicating what was happening. We can always get better. You know, we'll always take those suggestions. But I just want to thank the team, because I know they were fielding calls for dispatch. So, you know, that's what a team is. And, you know, if nobody else says it to you guys, I'll say thank you to Public Works and all the folks who did the work out there. Thank you very much.
City Manager?
I'm going to echo some of the comments. I just wanted to thank our quarterback, Aaron Russell. He did an excellent job. James Kunkie was also hand-in-hand with us: Fire Department, Police Department, Neighborhood Services, Parks Department. We, it was a full team effort on this. I'm also grateful for my mother. It's a funny story. We're having a meeting, an informal emergency operations center meeting online, and my mother, I was visiting her, and she's screaming at me from the other room, telling me how to make my decisions, and that I should do something different, and I need to tell LISD X, Y, and Z. And I had to pause the audio and go, "Mom, I'm on the phone." And so, then I got back on, and then Aaron was like, "I can get my mom on the phone if we want help." And Brooke was like, "I can get my mom, too." So, we had a little bit of levity right in the middle of it. But with that, as my mother always taught me, is to try to figure out how we can do things better. Obviously, we're not perfect. I think we did execute with excellence in this regard, but we are committed to looking at ways we can improve always. And so, we are right now in a self-reflection period, where we're kind of making sure what actually happened. I will tell you that every person who has contacted me directly and has said that they didn't get the call out, we've looked them up, and they were not set up for, to get the call outs. Either one was set up in another city, thought that would translate over to Lewisville. Others were not even enrolled. Some were enrolled but didn't check to get water updates. So, I think there's ways we can do better on getting people signed up, and I think that'll be a push in the upcoming months. But I want to thank council also for giving us the grace. I know that you guys are hearing it a lot, and you guys gave me a lot of space to deal with it. So, I appreciate it.
All right. I do want to deal with one small comment that I think is run through about this, is that this was a result of not investing in our infrastructure. That is blatantly 100% not true, because I sit up here and have to approve water rate increases year after year after year. And I watch other cities that postpone that, push it off, and put themselves in a situation where they can't afford to maintain the water infrastructure they have. This particular location, I actually drove down there. I took, that photo was not something the staff sent me. It was something that I went down and looked at and took a picture myself, because I wanted to see what the implications were. And you can see where the erosion is happening, and that's the Timber Creek watershed. For those of you who know about Timber Creek, you know that many of our houses have had to have stone reinforcement in the neighborhoods to keep Timber Creek from washing away a couple of our neighborhoods. That's because so much concrete has been built in the watershed. Now, to understand, that watershed goes all, I mean, almost all the way across Denton County into Lewisville. It goes up through Argyle, it goes through Double Oak, it goes through parts of Flower Mound. So, all of that concrete, as we continue to grow, means that that water gets dumped into that poor little creek, and now it becomes a raging river. And when we get, the rainstorms that we get now, that dump, you know, inches of rain within the matter of an hour, that creek will erode, and it has. And so, what happened here is, we can absolutely see where that water erosion has accelerated, and it undermined the particular pipe that we had. The pipe's 25 years old, so not young, but also not old in the scheme of things. So, we program funds regularly to make sure our water system is up to snuff. The state requires us to have a 50-year plan. So, there are a lot of tools on water specifically in Texas that are done right, that the City of Lewisville follows. So, I would encourage residents to understand that this has nothing to do with management. This has nothing to do with a council that has not invested. This council has invested for decades in our water system, and we continue to improve it. So, I want to thank you guys for that. I want to thank past councils for holding the line on that and understanding that, yeah, it's a burden on everybody, but if we keep it shallow and wide and everybody lifts together, it allows us to have a great infrastructure that we can recover from. So, with that, I don't believe we have any other actions on tonight's council agenda. We stand adjourned.